All right, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of February 21st, 2023. It's 6:00 PM and we have all councilors attending. We do have a set of minutes to approve, and I believe those are for January 24th.
That's correct.
So I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Seconded?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good to go. Public speak time. If anybody's here for anything that is not on the agenda. And tonight, we are looking at all the pay plans and the classification of pay plan. And we do have vacant storefronts on the ordinance, just because I wanted to, just in case, because we were updating it a little bit. But that is pretty much ready to go. So I think we can go ahead and just, if anybody doesn't have anything to say for public speak time, then okay, we're good to go. So let's, let's start with the veterans agent going to grade F. So, and then give me a moment, because that's first in the, that's first in the packet, so that's the easiest way to go.
Yes, I'll give a little bit. So Michael Slater is currently our veterans agent. Right. We share him with South Hadley. And we are no longer going to be doing that regionalization anymore this coming fiscal year. So we really need to commit to getting our own veterans agent. I'll let him give you the details on the position and stuff like that, but as far as like the grade classification goes, I think it would fall this category based on competitiveness of the position. And, you know, it's, it's kind of like its own department, but it doesn't manage a lot of people. So it didn't really need to be in the same level necessarily as the other department heads that are overseeing a lot of staff. But I will let Michael kind of give a little feel on the position in general.
All right, so Veterans Services, our main focus is the administration of Chapter 115. Benefits here in the state of Massachusetts, state mandated program under Massachusetts law of Chapter 115 that provides financial support to low-income and fixed income veterans or surviving spouses. Program is 75% reimbursement of every dollar that we spend through the program, as long as the work's not profitable. Current workload is too much for one individual, and that's why we've moved away from the district and into a single office. So the current proposal is 25 hours a week dedicated here in East Hampton to manage Chapter 115. We also do VA application assistance for all the different benefits that come from the VA. We partnered with many of the departments here at City Hall to make different projects come together, to increase the overall availability of services to veterans and surviving family members here. So that's where, it really, it needs more than the 16 hours that it's technically dedicated to right now under our current law. And that's our question to get it stood up and start looking for the right person.
Counselors, any questions?
So just to clarify, is this an additional position? Are we talking about your position that you currently have?
This will be a, so right now, we exist in a district, so I'm a director for South Hadley, East Hampton combined.
Yep.
This will be a stamp in one office specific here in East Hampton, who we will look to find someone to, that will come into its own office.
Okay.
Because it was a district position, we didn't add it as part of our schedule before, so we need to implement it for us to be able to hire for this position.
Okay. Feel free to say that you're not going to answer if you don't want to. So are you staying in the other community?
I will, so East Hampton is pushing a 40-hour-a-week full-time position, so that's the position I'm, that's why I said it.
I said East Hampton.
All right, you tell that, okay. So it's not that, I think it needs more than that, I will apply there.
Okay, okay.
So I still have to apply for whatever job I want to have.
I will say that Michael has been really generous in helping us find someone to fill this position. We've, you know, he's really done a lot of research for us, the right candidate. So we have one or two prospects that, once this position is solidified, we'll look into a little bit more.
That's great, thanks. Anybody else? Mayor?
I would just, you know, the, the position, the regionalization of the veterans district with East Hampton and South Hadley used to also include Grandi, is, makes a lot of sense on a lot of different levels around the payments. But the work for, the real work and gist of the job is really having an agent who's working with veterans to get them into other programs, benefits, workforce, and whatnot. And that's not anything that East Hampton has ever supported fiscally in the budget. That said, it's not that he doesn't deserve it, want it, or should have it. South Hadley is in a different place. Honestly, the difference is between technology and our infrastructure, and we have a lot more investment to go into infrastructure right now. But what we're, what Mike has done for us has shown us the potential, excitingly, as well as laid the groundwork for what I feel, and you will see in some budget, this next one, what the agents, the veteran agent position should be for the city of East Hampton. And then I just clear that it's, it's a loss to not, East Hampton not having Mike on board, but we are not ready to really put that all together. I mean, I don't know if you've ever had an office stay here.
I have one now, because I took it by force in the senior center.
So I mean, it's just a matter of, I wouldn't, I just don't want to get a message out to the veterans and the families and whatnot. Mike has, in his actual, is actually, but also within the profession, really brought East Hampton to a place of, this is not only what, what people need, we deserve it, and I do think that we can get there. I, as mayor in the budgeting, can't get there on, on Mike's schedule. And honestly, South Hadley's needs. South Hadley is in a great position. They're the, to really, you know, we will be looking back at South Hadley for how to sort of make it happen in East Hampton in the near future.
Okay, thank you. So I, I was able to take a look at the job description. It seems very complete. And as far, I think what you said as far as grade F, it seems like it makes sense, given the supervisory roles. So I, I feel okay with this. I don't know how you guys are feeling at this moment, but, you know, I think at the end of the day, we should probably vote on each one of these separately. And, you know, President Gomez, do you have anything you want to add before we continue forward on this path?
Okay. So if I, I might ask this multiple times tonight for each position. Do we have a general idea of how this classification was determined?
Yes.
And then in terms of where are we at with wage parity compared to other individuals that would be doing this kind of work?
Yes. And that, like, will kind of go into, you know, that whole pay scale revision that we're looking at later on. But the grades are based off of supervision given, supervision that they give, supervision received, education and experience required, like, just a myriad of different things. I think that there's like nine or so different things that you would look at.
Yep.
Confidentiality, legal responsibility, those types of things.
Okay.
So with a position like this, it would fall in that way. It does hold some legal responsibility and some confidentiality and stuff like that, but they don't have anybody else there overseeing it and, you know, really a solo ship.
All right, I probably won't ask for the other, that makes sense, now that I understand what that formula looks like. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. So I would entertain a motion to add the position of veteran agent at grade F to Chapter 7, Section 7-17.
So moved. Seconded?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good, that one was easy. All right, so on my, it looks like on my agenda, the next thing is the five positions. I don't know if Jeff, you want us to, if you're on vacation, I'm happy to move you up if you want to.
Whatever order you want to go in, we're all here.
Okay.
Ready whenever.
Okay. So, I don't want to encroach on your vacation, trying to respect that. I'm there too.
So the five positions?
Yeah, let's go to the five positions.
The independent department? So I'm gonna, you know, like.
Is that okay in your?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. I have them all separated, so we can talk about them whatever order you want.
Okay, perfect.
But I'll let Jeff again mostly take the reins, but I'll just kind of talk, you know, we've been talking for a while now about the growth of his department and the evolution of it and where it needs to go. And this seems to be the most logical way to move to not only routine staff, but to kind of help the department grow in the direction that we want to see it go, especially for East Hampton. So I will let Jeff go for it.
That's great, thank you. Emily hit the high notes. I thought, I wanted to say that it's important to note that the proposal, I have a couple of notes here from my device, but it doesn't add any staff. This proposal is not to add new staff members. I just want to make sure that was clear. And really, no one's getting big raises or anything out of this. This is really, as Emily said, it's kind of about the evolution of the planning department and to ensure that it's kind of positioned well to keep our existing staff who have been here for a while. And that's really what, what was the key driver when, you know, both Jamie, who's been here for since 2012, approached me first in just looking at the scale, the pay grade, and also the title, you know, of the position has changed in that period of time. And, you know, I worked with Emily and we talked about making sure that it has evolved or will evolve with where we are, where we're at today. And then Pasqualina, as well as our city arts coordinator, and that position also has evolved a lot in the past five, six years. The arts coordinator started out as a part-time, grant-funded position, and then over the past six and seven years, we've moved it up into a full-time, it's a full-time position in the planning department. But the growth of that position has really been creation of new programs, arts and cultural related programs, applying and receiving grants. And then, you know, Pasqualina's trade and what she's really bringing to the table and to this position is fundraising, because it's a position that the city is funding. But other than that, there is no budget allotted to all of the arts program that's going on, so that's all grant and fundraised every year. And so that really lended itself to kind of evolving into the proposal that we have today. Two things that are not really part of this, but just worth me saying, is that the conservation agent has been sort of that evolution as well. We started with no conservation agent. The former planner had gotten a grant to split a conservation agent here in South Hampton. That was in 2017. We kept the position part-time, and then over the last year, working collectively with everybody, we, we positioned it so it's now full-time. And the vision for that is really obviously staffing the conservation commission, but looking at all the environmental sustainability initiatives, which is something that we really, we are doing well at, but we need to have that position. During the pandemic, the city council funded, the one new position that we created was the assistant planner, the second assistant planner, and that was really the person in the office who deals with members of the public. Just, you know, we had a constant influx of people who have questions and that, and then the permitting, the land use permitting boards. And what that has allowed is Jamie's assistant planner role to really shift to a more senior level role, managing the CPA funds and the CDVG funds, which is literally millions of dollars that this position has responsibility for. And then I, as part of this proposal, the city planner becomes a director role, very much in line with other departments that have staff. So, you know, anecdotally, just on my, from my position, something I did want to say is that we do and we don't want to talk about the people in the position, but we really put this forward to support the people who have been here, so that's part of it. But then growing the position so that if any one of us were to leave, the city can actually hire at a better position, at a better advertisement, and then get more qualified candidates. So the director is important. You know, we have a bunch of different communities in Western Mass, and East Hampton is one of the few that doesn't actually have a director in the planning department role. So Jamie's here, Pasqualina's here, and then Jesse, Jesse Beltrini is the chair of the planning board, probably the most familiar with the way the planning department functions. So we're all here for questions or comments or things like that.
Thanks so much for the overview. I'll just ask my colleagues, do you guys have any questions at this point?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so. I mean, but I think anybody that is familiar with the business of the city knows the workload that you all have been producing over the past few years. And I think it is not an unknown opinion that you needed more people, and you need to be better compensated for the work that you're doing. So to me, this seems like a no-brainer, and I don't see anything specifically in the language that jumps out at me. You know, I, I thank you for all of the work that you all do, and, yeah, I mean, this, it just makes sense.
I do want to say something.
Yes.
I, first of all, Jeff's point is a good one about sort of keeping the individuals out of the structure, but first of all, we have like a phenomenal planning department. People, I mean, I deal with planning departments throughout Western Mass, all across the state, and we have like one of the best ones around. And this is a good problem, it's because the mayor and the city council has supported the planning department and like gotten more staff over the years, which is also great, because, I mean, when I started, I don't know, 12 years ago or whatever, it was just a planner, and that was it, and it was way too much for one person. And I think it's still probably too much for the people we have, but it's much better than it has been. So I think it's a good thing that we're addressing the fact that it really has turned into like a professional planning department that's beyond just city planning, and it's really about sort of community development. And so again, I hope nobody here ever leaves this department, but I realize that they likely will at some point, and that's probably good for them. But this, I think this is crucial to making sure we can replace people. These, these are really hard positions to fill, and if we're like cutting corners on title and salary, we're going to end up with periods of time with nobody in those spots, and that would just be a nightmare for everyone in the city, whether they know it or not.
Tom?
I'm not a planner, but I've worked with some planners. We, my office also hires, like, planning degrees are one of the things you can do to get into my office. And so I do know that those skill sets are at a premium, and I know that, you know, you need a realistic like pathway, or you're going to hit a ceiling, and then you're going to make some decisions. So I think that, again, without even thinking about the individuals involved, and, you know, I'm fairly impressed with the work that the individuals here have done, but even without taking that into consideration, I think it's good to have a structure that can allow for a person out to have a career here for a while, without feeling like they're going to sort of hit a ceiling with their position, because there isn't a job for them to move into. So I think this is a good idea.
Okay, I'm, I'm on board with that. And, and I think, you know, I've worked with a lot of planners in my tenure, you know, back when it was just Stuart Beckley hanging out down in the basement. And, and I would say the evolution has been, it's been really great to kind of watch unfold, and, and I think that this is one of those places where you, you make strategic investments into, into structures that will bring, you know, things forward that are going to be really beneficial for the community. So, and I see this as one of those. I mean, just looking at the job descriptions, it's a lot. Tom?
The other just point I would have to make, not that I think any of us are undecided on this one, but just for the benefit of the public, is that just with the way that the fiscal structure of the state is going, you know, with Prop 2 and a half, like, we are going to be, unless something radical changes at the federal or state level, we are going to be increasingly dependent on grants to at least slow the decline of everything falling apart, because that's where we are, right? And that's a labor-intensive process, and it's going to just get more labor-intensive the more reliant we and everyone else are on that sort of funding structure to do a lot of the things that we need to do. So I think that from a fiscal perspective, it really is one of, like, I mean, there's only a few departments that actually bring in money. And there's a lot of grants that we don't get if we don't have good planners who know the area and understand what we need and understand how to make that kind of stuff happen. So, you know, it's, I'm sure there's like a number that, like, you could give for what a planning department should be funded at that I think was silly, but like, I just, I generally think it's like, yeah, more of that, like, because it's, that's kind of where we are.
Yeah.
You know?
Mayor, President Gomez?
I would just say, you know, quickly, the, this process overall, a planner bag has been advocating for changes like this. We've done some incrementally, but it has really put together a lot of work and thoughtfulness from within the department and the board, as well as working with HR to present what you're seeing tonight. And, and the city council and, and my office have worked, I feel they're rather well since 2018 around resiliency and grit. And I think that this is an important time in city's history to differentiate a little bit those old-timey words of resiliency and grit. They have the same meaning. And it's resiliency and, and grit shouldn't be misplaced of, well, we can just keep going because we are resilient and gritty. Like, we now have a department that has come a pretty hard scramble that is bringing down grant dollars, but also engagement pieces in our city equal to cities much, much, much bigger than, than we are, because each one of them individually, and the planner, and the planning board also puts around the skills they need to, to use in 2020, I was going to say 2023, but like for 2025 plans. I mean, so resiliency and grit is needed when you're using a dial-up phone, and it's needed when you're using a smartphone. But what's before you now is really acknowledging not only the skills that we have, that we want to recognize very formally. I think we owe it to the city, right, to keep this structure in place. Hopefully, nobody will ever leave, like, you know, including you, Chair, oh, it's me. But the reality is, this is what East Hampton deserves. And we need to put the structure in. We're still resilient, we're gritty, but the bottom line is, we've got to be giving, delivering what our residents deserve, but also giving what our employees and professionals deserve, so. So I think everybody actually in this room, I know you've all kind of had the hand in working through these really detailed job descriptions and pay plans and, and comparatives. It's really an impressive piece of work.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I concur with everything you guys said, so I'm not going to repeat, because I think you guys are doing a crazy, crazy job towards, toward community. But I do have a few questions. And I go one by one, is, and I'm going to attach to the names, and I shouldn't, and I know that, but I'm going to do it. So the art position, the Art and Culture Program Director, is, is in the same grade today? It's grade E? With the position that we have today? So it will stay in the same, in the same grade?
Yes, I will, yes, I will, yes.
Yes.
And.
I'm not the boss here, I'm the boss upstairs.
Well, no, we have an arts coordinator in grade D currently.
So that will be jumped to grade E.
So then we are going to keep that position in grade D, but add this position.
Which one you said, I'm sorry?
We have an arts coordinator position, which Pasqualina currently is.
Are we going to keep that one?
We're going to keep it in existence.
And we're going to add a new one?
And we're going to add the new one.
At grade E?
At a grade E.
That doesn't mean that we're going to hire someone else?
No, it just means that we're going to.
But it's going to keep it open.
In there should the needs change.
So we're going to have two positions?
It will, the arts coordinator position will still exist, but it will not be filled.
All right, but my question is, so we're going to have two positions? I didn't have, we're going to have two persons, we have two positions. That's it, yeah. So that position will start, the new position will start on July 1st?
Yes.
No, so we approve it, we, it can be effective July 1st?
It can, we would have to post it for seven days.
Okay, we added the position, but that doesn't mean she will get it. We have to.
We would still have to post it.
To post it, and they have to apply, people will apply.
Legally, we have to post the position.
I got it. Same with the associate planner, position D, this will be something similar, and we're going to keep going, because we are adding three new positions. We're going to have the same process for all three positions?
Yes.
Planner, assistant planner, director of planning and community development, and I guess director of planning and community development is, is basically the position that we're looking for, your, your position?
Yes.
Kind of, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to be the same process, it's going to be open for the public or inside, I don't know how it works.
Yeah.
The chart, you're the expert with the chart.
Yes, yes.
But, but it's going to be, it's going to be posted.
Seven days has to be posted, yes.
So why the planning, planner position is grade down to the F when it's G now? What is the main reason? Because it's just of changing?
Because we wanted to, we think it's really important to have the department head be director of planning and community development, and we want to put in the same category as all the other department heads. So that's why, but we think that it would be valuable to keep a player position available in case we should need that later on, kind of similar to the arts coordinator position. So not necessarily eliminating that, but kind of keeping it in our back pocket. So it wouldn't be filled, but we'd be moving it down, because that position could be, the job description could be manipulated to be something underneath the director.
So question to the mayor. So when you, when the mayor presents the budget to you like first?
Yes.
And on the, the planning board, the planning department is going to have all the positions. So I guess for the planner, for the planner now, it's going to say zero, because we're not funding that position. The position is going to be available, but because it's, it's not going to be, no one there, it should be set zero.
It, it should be zero. I mean, it'll be a question of when this process, how this process turns out, and the timing of it, and when I get the budget to you. I mean, the hope is that we'll have time to accurately reflect all changes before submitting. But depending on how this goes or whatnot, sure, it could be, the budget is prepared now with what we have now, that's the assumption we're going forward as I create the budget overall, and there would be something on July 1st that, almost like a, an appropriation that would introduce in these changes, depending on the conversations here, negotiations, what's asked, is that, you know, are you trying to get me to say that I am or I'm not putting somebody in a position?
No, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, right.
No, I'm not saying that.
Can we pause for one second?
Yes, sir.
Council Pete has a question.
I'm sorry.
Sort of a question, sort of a suggestion, which is that we can do all of this, and I'm in support of it, but once it's all over, I might suggest that the planner title at grade F, maybe you find a new name for it, because otherwise, right now, you're in a situation where at grade D, you're an associate planner, and then at grade E, you're a senior planner, and then at grade F, you're a planner. Like planner outranks senior planner?
Master planner.
Something, yeah, I don't know. It's just, it's just a, like a title, it's just kind of, it's not a big thing, but.
We just had city, like, city planner was one of the.
Okay. In the spreadsheet right there, it just says planner.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, that's probably something we could change, because we've always called it city planner, but technically in the pay plan, it's just planner.
Okay.
So we could, we could definitely add it that.
And is that, that's all?
Okay, cool.
So how many positions we have today for the planning board, in total, today?
Currently, there are five filled positions.
Five? That's full field positions. I'm asking how many positions we have today?
Five.
Because that doesn't mean field and positions are two different things. Five positions we have today. And if we approve this, July 1st, planning board is going to have eight positions.
Five or seven?
It'd be seven, because we're changing the title of the assistant planner to associate planner.
But this is adding, adding, adding. If we are adding three new positions, we'll end with eight.
I'm sorry, it says change, so, yeah, one, two, three, we're changing this once, that's four, we're moving the planner, five.
Yeah.
And then we have.
We have one changing, we have one adding position to the art, we add one position to this adding another position.
Yeah.
We adding positions, that means we have another position, right?
We're, we're not adding people necessarily.
So, no, I'm not saying people, I say positions.
Yeah, so we're adding three new positions. Yes, so we're adding three new positions.
So we're gonna add with eight positions, no, I'm not saying eight people, it's eight positions.
I just need to calculate.
Cause there's five current and there would be three additions, so that would be.
Right?
That makes sense to me. I mean, but but some, not all of those are necessarily gonna be filled.
I'm not saying that.
Right, right.
And I'm not asking that.
Yeah. And so, and Ben, I don't know if, like, that doesn't really, and I don't feel concerned that the planning department would have eight positions?
No, I'm not, but I just wanna be clear.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
The one, sorry, the one, I, you're asking me questions I did not think about, the difference between what's filled and what's just there. But I do wonder about the, it's the second bullet is adding an associate planner.
Yeah.
To position, position to grade D.
Yeah.
But that was supposed to be taking the assistant, we have two assistant planners.
So we're in, if you look down to more bullet points, it's changing the assistant planner position to senior planner.
Right.
And moving it to grade E.
Right.
So one goes away.
If someone goes away.
So it's seven.
So what she says. Cause this, one of them is swapped.
On the round.
It's it's delayed because we adding position doesn't mean.
I didn't think it really mattered either way.
Because at the end of the, at the end of the day, if we adding positions, the last title will stay there. Even if no one is in that position, the title is still there and the position is still there.
But.
I'm not arguing, I'm not saying, I'm not concerned, I'm just, I just wanna be clear with everybody. Then at the end of the day, when we vote for this, we adding three positions, instead of five position of the planning board, we're gonna have eight position on the planning board. Available that we can fill.
Okay.
Not necessarily, we have to fill it, but it's gonna be eight positions.
Council Pete.
That's my point.
Well, I think what she's trying to say though is that one of, there's two positions that are being added and there's one position which is being like renamed and reclassified. But it will no longer, there will no longer be an assistant.
No.
As a planner job at all, the assistant planner job will be eliminated.
Assistant planner position will go away and go change to senior planner.
Uh huh.
Yes, replaced by senior planner.
And I apologize that that was not.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's, which is fine, I mean, I get it. And I, so I, you know.
Again, you're saying if we voted this way, we adding three more positions.
Okay, so we can just be, I guess we'll be clear in the minutes. That the, that the associate planner is a new position. And that the assistant planner is a is a position that is going to, is gonna be changed to senior planner.
Yes.
Yeah, will no longer be an assistant planner.
Right, exactly. So assistant planner.
Add a glad to, okay, cool.
Yep.
I'm good with this.
I I'm good with the tip, anybody, anybody else have any comment?
I agree with that too.
Thanks, cause I mean, that, you made it as clear as mud, Omar.
I just wanna be clear with everybody.
Yeah.
I'm like I'm solving a riddle.
Yeah. Alright, so, and and I said it from the beginning, don't sleep on the planning department, it's one of the most important departments in the city, so we appreciate that. So before, you know, as we move into this, the the motion would be. To amend chapter seven, section seven dash seventeen, exhibit A, classification of employees. By adding the position of arts and culture program director to grade E, adding an associate planner position to grade D. Adding director of planning and community development to grade, grade G. Changing the assistant planner to senior planner in grade E and moving the position of planner from grade G down to grade F. That would be the motion.
Seconded.
There you go. Alright, so we have a motion to second, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi, motion passes.
Will you able to forward that language?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, cause that's a lot of.
It's a lot, oh wait, you didn't write it down while I was saying it? Okay. So Emily, I'll let you take us where you wanna go to next.
Wherever, whatever you're gonna next on the adjustment, bring it at me.
Okay, so, remove five positions redundant, obsolete, now unionized.
Yes, so I do, if possible, make one amendment to this, just based off of. Finalizing our dispatch contract, we still have the on-call dispatchers, which are not trying to protect the union. So they would need to remain in the pay plan for the on-call position.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's something we can choose to move.
I I think we can, yeah, I think we can do, yeah, yep.
Okay, gotcha, so that's the only one I would like to keep. But I'll just kind of talk about, like, we have some of these positions that have been sitting there that haven't been used or kind of have become obsolete. Like the water sewer utilities clerk, I think, used to be in the tax office or something. But that position doesn't exist anymore, other people have taken on those roles. We have, you know, office aides and stuff like that, the senior center, the receptionist position is the same thing. Dispatchers, you know, the full-time dispatchers and the dispatcher supervisor have all been unionized, so.
Okay. So let me just to make sure I have the right, so we have adjust, this is like a spreadsheet and the adjustments made, is that what we're talking about? Like the different removed receptionist position from A, obviously position is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to formulate how I would make a motion for this one?
I guess I would move to amend the the language to remove the point for dispatcher grade C from the motion.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on that to remove that one first, so we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, and for the discussion, all those in favor? Hi, okay, so remove that. And so I think we could probably just do a blanket motion for the rest of them, just to, yeah, do you wanna make a crack at that one?
Do we, do we have language or?
We don't, I mean, other than just removing, hold on, I might be able to figure this out.
Okay. I think I can do it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, take a crack, yeah.
I move that we remove the following positions. We amend chapter seven, section seven dash seventeen, exhibit A, classification of employees. By removing the following positions from the classification chart, receptionist to grade A, general clerical at grade B. Water sewer utilities clerk at grade C and dispatcher supervisor at grade E.
Okay. Um, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion, all those in favor? Hi, motion passes. That one was easy.
And I didn't open my mouth.
Tony, you can, you can contribute whenever you want.
Maybe we'll do the other easy one next and then dive into the big pay plan and stuff like this, okay?
Yes, yeah.
So we'll just talk about the department heads. So the council on aging director, city clerk, principal assessor and the executive assistant of the mayor, those positions. Are all active department heads that I don't think have been in the right grade for some time. And I think we need to correct that and put them where they belong, seeing as how they do have a lot of oversight staff. And we need to be competitive with the market, so I think this is the best way to do that.
Okay, go ahead, Tom. I know that in some conversations I've had, cause we had, there was some back and forth about this in finance last year. And there had been a conversation at some point about moving some of these director level jobs out of the pay plan and to be sort of contract jobs like some of the department heads are.
Yes.
Where's that conversation?
So legally, we can't make most of our department head positions contracts. You can't make them individual contracts.
Interesting.
In mass general law, I talked to a lady from Collins Center, we had a big discussion about it. So there's a few specific positions that you can, such as like, you know, the police chief, fire chief, finance director, I think, auditor. Yeah, auditor and then chief. Yeah, so there was like maybe five positions that you could, but the rest you could not. I think something, a discussion to be had and I think we should look into is making these positions exempt positions instead of being hourly tracked. I think that's something that we should definitely look into and, you know, I know other communities or group has someone take a salary. Um, I think that's the best route for us to take, but for right now.
I'm fine with this for right now, I just think, you know, what what struck me when we were discussing this in finance was that sort of the. And it's funny because I'm now, I've moved into being part of UMass Amherst, which is on a similar step program. So I could see there is this sort of thing where that sort of system is gonna eventually cause a problem when you hit that max step. And you're the head of your department and so it's like, well, like it kind of provides a disincentive to stick around at that point. So, you know, I I do think that's something that as we go forward, I I really strongly. It sounds like you're a couple steps ahead of me on that, so that's good to know. So I just think that it's something that we should, I I definitely would encourage us to keep looking at it. Cause it, it's easy to see where that, like you, where that makes it hard to actually retain people with a ton of institutional knowledge.
Absolutely, I think that's a huge issue. I do think that like with individual contracts, you can run into other issues of inequities and stuff like that.
For sure.
So this, I mean, this pay scale makes sense in that form that I think it's easier to be more equitable across the board and not have biases and stuff like that in contracts. But I do hear you on that and that's why like hopefully, you know, with what we're trying to do with the pay plan now. And if we can keep on top of that as we go forward and hopefully we can keep up and keep our staff, because I wanna retain them too.
Okay, that's my two cents, but I'm good on this.
Okay, great, any questions, Brian?
Nope, not at all, I mean, yeah, makes sense.
And my only question is, as far as the exemption from hourly, is that something that would go through some other processes? Or is that a, a process that you could do on your own, wouldn't necessarily require?
I wasn't listening to the beginning, sorry.
No, um, I believe.
Just trying to do math in my ear, actually.
I, that would probably be some kind of ordinance thing, I would imagine. I have to do a little bit of research into it, so fairway would, you know, that.
Yep.
But I think that's the direction that we we need to go, yeah.
Okay, um, cause we could definitely, I think we would be open to that kind of proposal, so. Alright, cool, so we have a request to amend chapter seven, section seven dash one seven. Classification of employees by moving the council on agent director, city clerk, principal assessor, executive assistant to the mayor from grade F to G on the pay plan. So someone can move that forward.
Seconded.
So we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Hi, okay, motion passes. Alright, that one was easy too.
There you go, I know you guys are making this too easy.
No.
I would throw a lot of, but I was like, I just don't.
Don't jinx us, don't, don't jinx us.
I just jinxed us. I do, always do this. Um, so I'll kind of give a brief, you know, explanation of this and then you guys can ask your own questions or if you need clarification. So, you know, as you know, this has been a battle, we've been fighting since I've been HR director. And I'm sure previous HR directors have been battling this, that we just can't catch up salary wise, continually been behind. Trying to catch up and each year we try to catch up and we just still can't keep on top of it. So, you know, the mayor and I worked together and came up with an idea where we do have so many people that have been here a long time and are maxed out. They're at that step twelve and really are relying on plas and stuff like that. So we thought with that in mind and with the fact that, you know, minimum wage keeps going up, so now that's fifteen dollars an hour. The best course of action to kind of help our staff that's been here a long time continue to grow. And also help us to obtain new qualified candidates would be to remove those first four steps completely. And just add them to the end. And then to, you know, incentivize, I think, having a three percent increase in between steps kind of gives that little extra jump. That maybe will help us keep on top of things. And then, you know, we figured this, he had a good idea of, because right now we do step increases January first each year. So if you're hired before July first, you get a step increase on January first. We thought it would be way easier across the board to just eliminate the January first step increases. So that then budgeting isn't a nightmare anymore and put those instead July first, so that then you're only budgeting for that one, the whole fiscal year.
I love that.
Right?
As a member of the finance committee.
You know, I, he's a one hundred percent right.
I damaged.
And I was like, you made my life so much easier. And then, you know, we would, when we're hiring people, instead of having, oh, if you're hired on this date, you don't get this and blah blah. We just need to put that in mind as we're hiring, like this person can be getting a step increase in July, so let's hire them out of one instead of a two or something like that.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Okay, any, any thoughts, questions?
No, that makes.
I mean, I don't think you jinxed us because I, this seems to make a lot of sense to me, honestly, with inflation and wanting to retain staff. And and keep institutional knowledge, this is a, this is an important thing that we need to stay ahead of. So I, I feel like this is perfectly acceptable and and I, I think, well done.
Thank you.
As far as I can tell. Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I think this is great, I really commend everyone for for attempting this, because I think it's really helpful in the immediate term. But I think you guys were just talking about it will still result in some people getting to the, the end of the scale. And I think what I just wanted to say is I think what, the questions that Council Gomez had, maybe it didn't occur to me. But I think having a couple of different positions, like in the planning department, for example. If if there's a position that's in grade E that it maxes out over time, there at least is another option for that person to pursue a position in F. And then continue forward, I mean, I think that that is one of the reasons why it would be good to have positions in kind of each of the grades. Maybe it doesn't, maybe it's not across the board or anything, but it is still continuing to give that person at the end of the scale somewhere else to look. So, thank you.
And it's like their, their skills and their responsibilities and stuff like that.
I mean, I think that at the risk of, I mean, you, you, the only thing there is just that it's a lot, but like, other than just the fact that there's a bunch of positions. I actually think that if you could conceive of a person operating within a certain department at a certain grade. Then even if you don't have anyone in mind, even if you don't have the work in mind, it almost makes sense to put that there just so that there is the possibility to, for for mobility there. I mean, I, I don't wanna go too much into, but like at UMass, we've encountered this sort of thing. Where it's like, oh, this is a person that we, they're, they're great and we wanna give them ground, there's isn't a job, there isn't an existing job.
Yeah.
That they.
Could do.
That that we, that could, we could move them into, so like, I think, I, I, I see what you're saying, that like, that the, the way that this planning stuff is set up. It means that you could really have a like forty year career in the, you know, planning department without, you know, just sort of maxing out and then heading up and maxing out. And it would be okay. Do I understand, I'm just like looking at at the packet and it looks like you're saying that the, the increase. For this fiscal year in in salary, like total salary will be to about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And then from this point on, it'll be, it'll actually start to decrease a little bit. And I guess what I'm wondering is if we're changing the step increase from two point five to three. Oh, it's, it's the big part right there is just because of all the moving of the lower people up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we gotta get everyone on the scale and then we would be giving them their January increase early.
Right.
So you're kind of budgeting in for, we're essentially throwing them a little bit of a raise earlier than they should be getting it.
Right, I was initially, my question was gonna be like, how can it be that low? Then I realized that the, most of the city payroll is not pay plan and so it makes more sense. Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Of course.
I, I do agree with Jeff, I just only have one concern. So now we're being unfair with all the departments, because we're not creating more positions so that when people can keep moving to have. To use the same logic. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, if we're gonna use the same logic, we, we have eight position, eight positions in a plat, in in a department. But we're only gonna fill it with four to give it the opportunity to the people that are in that department, I'm repeating what I hear. To, to give it opportunity to that people to step up in another position that where they can stay here for longer. So that's unfair for all the department, that we are not creating more position in the other, those departments. So to give it a more opportunity to those department, uh, people in those department where we show the. people in those department, where we showed the twelve, the step twelve, to keep moving and getting more money. Just repeating what they said. I think that's what is unfair.
Alright, so let's go with that one, then go with the mayor.
Um, I completely,
I agree with him, but I agree with him.
No, I completely hear that though, and I do agree, and I don't think, I think it would be unwise to jump people to other grades and positions without there actually being a work increase, and without there actually being a skill increase. So let's just use an example of, say, Jamie right now is gonna, say she ends up being the Senior Planner. So then, say she eventually wants to go be City Planner. It's like, okay, well, what are you doing that equates to that position? I don't think that that was something that should be just handed to her because she sits in your age. But, and then with other departments, I do hear that, I think that there are some departments that are growing in that regard, like looking at the Health Department. They had Health Agent, now they have Director, but they kept the Health Agent along with the Inspector and those other positions. Even in my department, there's the position of Human Resources Director, the Assistant Human Resources Director, and then a Clerk. So there is development, and I think that just goes with the responsibility in that group. Um.
No, I see what President Gomez is bringing up, and I would say in, for one, planning, DPW, I'm trying to think of who else who's not under, um, are pretty technical departments that have technical skills that are attached to certain titles. That said, and I think I'm always in favor, if we create a new position, regardless of what the strategy is, and the strategy is exactly what we've been talking about, is to not omit or delete any job description. Because in a municipal field in particular, you can't do this thing, I won't go too far down the rabbit hole, with broadbanning, where a person is hired as X, but the broadband of that position X is actually a scale within the position, so if I'm brand new, but I have a certification for Microsoft Word, okay, so I got in on that, but I also can stay in that position and grow a lot with different skill acquisition. Within the municipal world, especially small municipalities, it is helpful to have all sorts of different job descriptions, of different steps and grades and skills, because when you have, and, you know, I think you've already said yes to it, so I'm just gonna kind of hold it, I think a great example is my office. I mean, think about how many different people, positions I've had in my office in five short years. And that's really just a tiptoe dance around getting a person who can handle the work of that office, and the skills are much less, they're more fluid, it's not a degree-involving. It's not knowing how to do GIS. And goes to a larger kind of hope-iffy part of the world I hope we get to, is that when we're posting our jobs, I would hope we wanna have as few absolute requirements as possible on our job descriptions. Right, so City Attorney, you gotta be an attorney, alright? But maybe, you know, or whatnot, but you, again, in my office, I think of Zoe, I think of Lindsay, I think of Jen, I think of Tracy, it's been a credit crew. Alan, Alan, and Heather. It's around, it wasn't any degree or certificate on the resume that got them the job, but what we quickly found out was the skills and what they had to manage and what they were doing were dramatically different than what was expected. And so when we went through, like, a Chief of Staff position, you know, and then Executive Assistant, each one is important, I think, for future mayors, to lead, to be able to bring and build the team they want to do. A little different in a two-person audit department, cuz you've got credentials and whatnot, but I do think that that's important, to give us some flexibility on skill level. Me, Jeff might hire as an entry-level admin person, which, not this year, but that ends up being, or showing the potential of being a great planner. And we would have those steps in between, and that kind of fluidity where we don't normally have it. I also think it begs to more transparency and honesty of what people are doing. I mean, it's pretty easy to take the existing job descriptions and what we had in 2017, and you just make the argument how it was close enough to go into the job positions we had, and we didn't create a lot of. And I think what we're doing here, and across all the departments, is important. The last thing I'll say to President Gomez is, a big a big variable that we're just starting, starting to tiptoe on actually doing is automating all of our internal processes in City Hall. And that is going to, I think, in a very exciting way, actually broaden people who can apply and come work in City Hall, because there will be consistency, and it's a program rather than, I mean, we're still using processes that are from when we were a town, and that's all good, and prove very good, this isn't slamming, but like, we wanna grow, we're not gonna, you know, wither on the vine in detail, so we still have town, you know, audit policies or whatnot that have morphed into city and whatnot, and that will be slowly rolling and going into one system that touches upon every single department in the city, and that's gonna change a lot of how what our job descriptions look like and what the skills are, and I think it also broadens our ability to go out and post these jobs all over the place. Right now, when we post a job that has anything to do with finances in City Hall, we use a software that only two other cities use. And so that is very narrow, and then if you can't find somebody who knows that, and you don't, then you're hoping actually for somebody who's worked in a town, who's familiar with those paper processes that came into a city, that were then put into a GIS system. So, you know, this is a little bit, but when pay equity and really diversifying and giving us, you know, more value to potential people to add, there's a huge, there's a huge curve coming in the next ten months that will start when you start going that way, and I'm sure that, and I will too, we'll be back before you to walk through that, and rely more on skills, and providing professional certifications for our employees rather than looking, starting out with a degree, or something like that, which is exciting. Exciting with the state finally getting that, folks who are in municipalities should get pre-tuition into college, to enter, thank you. I was just gonna say, I knew exactly, the forever learner, our HR Director is.
I will take it all day, every day.
Counselor Gomez, I mean, it is a good point. I would say, potentially, that, you know, department heads probably don't have anything stopping them from working with the mayor to say, hey, within our department, we feel like we could scaffold a couple of other positions, we wanna bring that to the City Council. I mean, so it could happen, whether they do that or not is up to them, I guess.
I'm not picking up from the department, I think they're doing a great job, I think, really, that's not my point.
But I see.
I think you guys, I don't know if you guys really understand what I'm trying to say. Same with the eight positions, I'm not talking about personal, I'm talking about the positions. Now, from five, we're gonna jump to eight positions. Same with what the City Clerk said, I'm not against what he's saying. I'm just saying that if we use the same logic that he's doing, that I think he's brilliant, and his logic, I see other departments will act the same to the mayor, to add more positions, so that we can move more people. That's the only thing that makes sense.
Yep, and that's possible, I would say that that could do. Yeah, I mean.
Me too, you're saying, that's what I said, it was unfair.
Yeah, I think this committee would be.
I use those words, maybe I'm sure it is unfair, but.
I hear you.
So, okay, any other thoughts? Okay, let's, so this would be a motion to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-17, Exhibit B, Pay Scale, by removing the first four steps from the pay scale to add four steps at the end of the pay scale, keeping the scale at a total of twelve steps. Changing the increase between steps from two point five to three percent. Moving January 1st step increases to July 1st each fiscal year, and moving employees from the old scale to the new scale by first placing them on the next closest applicable step, and then adding two additional steps.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
It's for the, it's gonna be easier still.
Yep. So I think that concludes.
God, you made my job way too easy.
I am on vacation, so.
This is the first step.
Yeah, so we do, so we do go, we're gonna set the public hearings and we'll.
We already did, right?
Oh, we already did, do that, we're ahead of the game. So I think.
So then now we go to the City Council for the first meeting in March, correct?
I can't remember which one we set it for, cuz I set a couple.
Somewhere.
But I think it is the, I think it is the first meeting.
I think it's the first meeting in March, or second.
Yeah, so that would be a good one to come to.
Absolutely.
Just in case anybody has questions.
We'll let you know.
But I think. But I think Omar will ask more questions.
He's like, she got it too easy tonight, we're gonna get her.
And so, and that's where the full council vote, and the public will be.
Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Awesome, and before we adjourn, can we take a look at a meeting?
Sure.
Date, because we need to discuss, I think we have, the language for the Recreative Equity has been updated, so. I'll see if I can ask, I wanna send that to you all, but we should probably, so we're at the twenty-first now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Alright, take care.
Take care. Can we look at maybe the second week in March, is that cool? The week of the sixth?
So like, okay, would that be like the seventh?
The seventh?
I think I could do the seventh, yep.
Okay, so let's shoot for the seven. At six o'clock, okay?
Yeah, this is fine.
Okay, alright, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.